Can we all rise to salute the flag, please?
Roll call of the members, Councilor Riggo.
Here.
Here, Councilor Correggio.
Here.
Here, Councilor Janino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Councilor Haas.
Here.
Here, Councilor Nowosowski. Here, Councilor Patch.
Here.
Here, Councilor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councilor Reardon.
Here.
Here, Councilor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Penta.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. We'll first do the unveiling of the Peter Jordan portrait.
Yeah, what I'd like to do is have the mayor, Councilor Jordan, little come up to address. I'd just make a couple comments that I had the pleasure to meeting Peter Jordan some years back, actually at the Moose, he made a speech for his son, which is very impressive. But that wasn't the moment that I really had a lot of respect for Pete Jordan. There was a time when Senator Kerry actually asked Councilor Jordan, myself, to go into the Veterans Hall in Boston to meet him. And we ran into a fellow that knew his father very well, who everybody probably knows is Joe Mochley. Came over to Jordan, he was a councilor at the time, and he had a lengthy conversation with him, most of it was about his father. And the one thing I remember him saying about his father was, "They don't make them like him anymore." He was a man of his word, kept his word, and I know, you know, the apple don't fall too far from the tree, as John always followed those same things, but I never forget him saying that, and he meant it, that, you know, those are the old days when people gave them where they kept them. It just goes to show you that type of guy Pete Jordan was. I just want to bring that memory up because it stuck in my head, you know, with the conversation with Senator Kerry at the time and Joe Mochley, how they really respected him and honored him. So with that being said, John, if you can come up and the mayor and then do the unveiling.
you had to know. He was my hero. And I used to, when we were living at home quickly and we were young boys, it was nothing to see John Kennedy there, Chris Herter, Leverett Salt and Stoll, all of these people that were part of the, what he always referred to as the Great and General Court, and Riggo Cappucci from East Boston, Charlie Iannello, you can go on, John Powers understands this because he was up in the hill, and it was, we didn't even know who these people were. But the government that they had then was, as Mr. President, my pal Richard, said was, "If you kept your word," and he had a code that my family was brought up on, and if anybody broke their word, the real king of the household, Regina, would call the shots. And it was loyalty, compassion, honesty, never break your word, and always take care of your own. And when he said that, he meant the people that put him in office, the people of Revere, because he loved Revere very deeply. So I would like to thank the mayor, our good friend, and the president, and the rest of the city council, Charles, for this honor.
Okay, yeah, all right. Mr. President, yes.
Yeah, give him a minute. Yeah, I got to spend rules, right? I'd like to ask the council for suspension of rules so we can take up the Little League before we take up, I do this all the time to poor threesome over there, but I didn't know they'd appreciate it. All in favor, all opposed, over.
Calendar item number two, certificates of appreciation will be awarded to the Revere Little League White Sox in recognition of winning the 2012 Little League Championship.
Councilor Powers.
One of the most rewarding functions that I have as a city councilor is recognizing an individual, or as in this case, a group of individuals, who have made a significant achievement in the city of Revere. Tonight, we have the honor of recognizing the Major League, Little League White Sox, and they have a very impressible record. They have had a 20-0 season. They won 15 games in the regular season and five games in the postseason. You guys get up here, come on, plenty of room here. And that, of course, is all due to the effort and energy that they put into this, and also to their coaches and manager. So once again tonight, we are going to present certificates to each of them, wish them good luck for this season and for many seasons in the future, in whatever achievements or endeavors, whatever endeavors they seek to do, okay? So we're now going to present these certificates. Chucky, Chucky Braid is the manager. Chucky?
Thank you, sir.
I'm going to have Chucky say a few words after the presentation of the certificates. And the first one goes to Captain Oscar Rascindo.[537.41][537.41](applause) Congratulations. The next one goes to Alejandro Arondo. Congratulations. The next one is to Captain Austin Velobos. Tristan Acuna. Tristan Acuna, where's Tristan Acuna?
Right behind you.
Right behind you. David Diaz is not here?
Yeah, I'll accept that one.
Dante De Coligero, is he here? Yep.[577.41][577.41](applause) David Diaz. David Diaz. Brandon Babosa, where's Brandon?
Right behind you.
Patrick Adolphus, where's Patrick?
Right there, right there, councilor.
Where is Coach Leoni?
Right behind you, right behind you, councilor.[623.82][623.82](applause)
Edgar Oliva, another coach, where's Edgar? Congratulations. Adam Bray, where's Adam?
Right there.
And I'd like to, if I may, read the certificate. They're all basically the same except for the names on them, and it reads, "An acknowledgment of your extraordinary athletic achievements accomplished only through perseverance, teamwork, and discipline as a member of the Revere Little League White Sox in winning the 2012 Major League Championship with an unprecedented 20-0 record. Special recognition is hereby accorded to," and this is for the manager, Chucky Braid, and I know how much effort Chucky puts into this.[686.13][686.13](applause) "This certificate of appreciation is presented by the City Council of the city of Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of its citizens this 22nd day of October in the year of our Lord 2012 and of the independence of the United States of America 236th." It's signed by City Clerk Ashley Melnick, by our council president, Richard Penta, and it's offered on a motion by myself, Councilor Powers.[720.23][720.23](applause) I'm going to, with this point here, ask Chucky to say a few words because I know firsthand how much work and effort he's put into this team, how he brought them from a couple of years ago, deficits, I believe, and to where they are today, and he deserves this more than any, most people come up here, really.
I appreciate that.
I'm actually going to say a few words.
Thank you.[751.23][751.23](applause) Thank you very much, Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, councilors, Councilor Powers, thank you, and Madam Clerk, thank you very much. I just want to take this time to thank each and every one of yous. These boys and girls that belong to this league do a tremendous job. Their hard work, their dedication to a sport that they love, some of them have to get pushed a little bit more than others, but you know what? With these kids and their parents, the involvement in the league is just incredible. To have something like this happen for these children makes all the hard work very gratifying to see them up here with the councilor and enjoying this time and this moment for them. I'm sure they're going to remember this for a long time. And again, to the parents, I want to thank you, thank you very, very much for everything that you've done and you continue to do, so you guys and girls will live around with that.[805.82][805.82](applause) And if I may just add to my coaching staff of Edgar Oliva and Emilio Leoni, they keep me straight. The days that we didn't want to practice, Emilio and Edgar would be at my house, rolling me out of my house, getting me to practice, buying new baseballs, equipment, whatever it is, but without them, it's, this wouldn't be, this wouldn't be happening either, so congratulations to them.[834.82][834.82](applause) And last but not least, to Revere Little League. Revere Little League, McMackin, I grew up there, my son is growing up there, hopefully, knock on wood, my daughter will grow up there, but it's a league that doesn't compare to any other. They are heads and shoulders above every other Little League that I've seen, have been witnessed, and it all starts with the president, Steve Roncevich, for leading the league.[863.13][863.13](applause) So again, so again, thank you very much, and we look forward to 2013 season.
We'll go back to our regular order of business.
Calendar item number one, National Grid, Verizon and Comcast will appear before the city council to discuss ongoing work within the city such as double poles and trench work.
How you doing, Stan? Any councils have any questions for, no, for Council Correggio?
Yeah, a question is for Verizon. Sir, the Jack Satterhouse, the phones were out of service for about two days. Are they going to be reimbursed, the building, the people, the residents of the Jack Satterhouse for the phones being out?
Through you, Mr. President. Any, any customer that is out of service has their bill rebated, provided that they give a call. If there's an issue happening, give me a call.
Right, right, thank you.
Council Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple of questions for yourself, and they regard, first of all, is a pole on the Linway, it's number 2069. It's in a very precarious position, it's tilted almost into the home there.
It's not a double pole, councilor?
Not a double pole.
Okay.
It's a pole that needs to be replaced. There's also one on Dunn Road, and I believe we spoke about this before, that's a pole that needs to be replaced. As you know, particularly Dunn and Dunn Road, those are wetlands down there, and perhaps because of the ground, the water, the softness of the ground, they have a tendency to, you know, move to one side more than the others. And my other, my other concerns are, as you know, we had, I think, the street poles on Fowler, and there's about six poles on Bickford, or five poles on Bickford. I'd like to see if I could get tonight, a time certain, as to when those poles would be removed. They've been there for a considerable amount of time now, particularly the ones on Fowler, that person calls me periodically, and to be honest with you, at this point, I'm embarrassed to give her an answer because I keep telling her, you know, "We're working on it," and it's, it's not happening.
Well, councilor, I can tell you on Fowler Street, and I'll let others speak for it, we're still waiting for others to move, but everybody's trying to coordinate their work effort. We've taken out 26 poles in September, you know, again, this is something that we're waiting on one of the utilities to move, and when they do, it will become our ball in court and we can remove it.
How soon if we, I believe maybe Comcast is the one that's on that, those poles, the three on Fowler, is that correct?
Yes, councilor, Tim Kelly from Comcast. We're actually off of the Fowler poles.
Okay.
We just came off those, but the PLM has not been updated as such.
So.
So that's the holdup.
So I guess the ball's in Verizon's court now, is that?
It will be officially when we update the PLM.
Any idea when that will be?
I actually sent an email to our project coordinator today. And as far as Bickford, I think we've had those ball in court for 11 days. We have 21 poles in total right now that have gone out to our contractor, so a lot of these should be cleaned up. The problem was, as you recall, that a lot of the, a lot of this was held up by the people that go before us, so the floodgates have kind of opened a little.
I understand.
Will be caught up as soon as possible.
Thank you, sir. Stan, with that said, can you give me an idea, a timeframe, as to when these poles can get off of Fowler?
Well, I know that we typically like to do these in bundles, and there are clearly enough in our ball in court, once these come in, to prioritize them so that they get removed as part of the, probably close to 40 or 50, I think, once Tim gets through.
Could you, because of the longevity of those poles, can you?
We'll ask that they.
Put them on the fast, fast lane?
That they be moved up on the list when, when we begin to address removals.
Any idea when that might be?
I couldn't possibly give you a date on a specific pole.
Can I, can I say it's within a couple of weeks?
No.[1268.33][1268.33](laughter)
I mean.
Counselor, I.
I understand, I understand the predicament that Verizon is under, but you know, when I get my phone bill, I pay it on the due date, and I would, I would think that these poles have been up there for months and months now, and I think it's time for, you know, the entities that are on them to take action.
Through you, Mr. President. I would gladly like to give you a date and time certain, I can't. I don't want to give you a time or a date that can't be brought to the bank, and right now you're asking me a question that I can't answer for you.
Okay, no, no, no month from now, two months from now?[1313.83][1313.83](laughter) I feel like I'm being stonewalled here.
One thing, one thing I'd like to say.
I'm beginning to feel like the Romney committee now on that question about Benghazi.
Through you, Mr. President, I.[1332.33][1332.33](laughter) But unlike that situation, councilor, I'm telling you the truth.[1338.51][1338.51](laughter)
Thank you, sir.
Well, one thing I would like to say, is he asked you to move these up on the list, I hope they're up on the list from other cities and not different wards, because we all have double poles in every ward.
No, I understand that.
Other cities, I don't have a problem, but moving up in list, each ward has its own jurisdictions, so be careful of that. Council Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, I got a chance to talk to Stan before the meeting, and the double pole at Malden in charge across from Vinnie Market, as you said, it's fire, and I've already talked to Chief Dougherty, so as soon as I, he gets back to me, I'll get to you, and I think you're next in line after, or Comcast, no Comcast will be next in line, I'll call Comcast. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Council Patch. Council Janino.
Thank you. My question's regarding that pole near the Parkview School still, that's the only one I had made a motion about a while back, and I drove by the school this morning and it was still, so I just wanted to know like where the holdup is for that one.
Is it a double pole?
Yeah.
I believe it is. It's in front of the Roosevelt School, everybody is aware of.
Not Harrowville.
I'm sorry.
Harrowville School, Revere Street.
Revere Street, I'm sorry. But everybody is aware that you're due to move, I couldn't, you know, I can give you an update later on on that specific.
Okay.
If you'd like.
Thank you.
Counsel, thank you, Council Janino. Council Guanasso.
Here comes a surprise. I got a call from a couple of constituents, namely one who's been very, very instrumental to me in helping me with the double polling, and he congratulates you. He said, "We initially, we had 16 to 19 on Cushman Ave, but down to six. I applaud you and your efforts, and it goes to show that this, this system is working. We are working collectively to do the right thing for our community, and with your assistance, it's happening," so I want to thank you.
Could you give me the name of the person, I'd like to give him a hug.
In deference to my dear friend, Council Powers, and he's going to try and outwit a former mayor, I don't think so.[1472.65][1472.65](laughter) I don't think that's going to happen, right, mayor?
Thank you, Council Guanasso. Council Nowosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I actually spoke to all the gentlemen beforehand, but I do want to congratulate all of them for working together since a year and a half ago when we didn't even know where a PLM existed. And, you know, and I want to thank you guys for meeting myself and the mayor at the time, Mary Ambrosino, and Chief Dougherty, and Mike Conley, to get everything started, to be in a position we're in today, you know, because I, you know, I'm pleased, I know there's a few that we have to tweak, but after the discussion I had with the chief, with Chief Dougherty a couple of weeks ago, and told him all the balls in court that he had, and a lot of them, he had his, his contract to look at, and we didn't even have wires on those poles. So they made an exerted effort to take all those bees, and now they're all in your ballpark now.
Right.
So, you know, that was a great effort to do, and we thank, you know, you and Dan and Tim for the hard work that, and what you've put up with, with, from us, because I know, I know it's not easy getting in front of 11 different people, you know, having to put up with, do this, do that, and everything, but, you know, I'm, I'm pleased with what I see, and I know you pick away at it, and it's been happening, and I thank you guys very much for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Nowosowski. I'd like to thank you all, so, I mean, that puts several calls in T and stuff, has gotten done. Just got a question for you, because actually he's brought it to me yesterday. You have double poles, and then you have poles that, I don't know if you were calling three-quarter poles or what, they're probably this far off the ground.
Yeah.
With the pole and probably go up three-quarters up the pole. What are, what are those?
Those are double poles as well, it's just a kick and cut, so that the last, well, typically we're the last person on. It just makes it easier for the placement of a pole. For instance, if a pole is in a tight space, they'll pull the old pole out, support it, put the new pole in the same location.
But this, this one here, everything is off it except for just one, I probably believe it's the fire department, but, I'm not sure. So there was no new pole put there, that's my point. This is the three-quarters pole put there and stuff was taken off, because there's still one, one wire still on the pole or a cable, whatever it is, but I was just surprised at that.
But it's still attached to, to the pole, correct?
It is.
Yeah. It's a new pole that they have cut the old one away and attached it to the new one, so it is in this list as a double pole.
Okay, thank you. I have National Grid, a couple of questions for, you know, Council Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of weeks ago, last month, I asked you about Conan Street, I don't know if you had an opportunity, go up and look at Conan Street, that runs off Malden Street, up to Fenley Street.
Was, was that a double pole?
No.
Yeah, that was.
Just the condition of the roadway.
Oh, that was a, a gas issue.
Big trench, yeah.
Yeah, gas issue, yeah. We did take a look at it, and I believe it's on a list to be, it's, I think, was it, was it a restoration? I don't have the, yeah, yeah, we're going to take care of that.
You're welcome, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council Haas. Council Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a question, Dan. Last meeting, I brought your attention on Sager Street.
Yes.
The caving of all of the roadwork there, nothing's been done, I just want to know if.
Yeah, there's, like I told you the last time I was here, we did, we have a number of situations where the, we have a list, we're taking care of some of them already in Revere, but we haven't got to all of them, but we will before the, the winter sets in.
All right, could you add to that list, on New Hall Street going into Festa Road, they just put a line in, it's like two, I guess they'll.
Is this a service?
Hopefully, that's, they brought service down to the first house on Festa Road.
Okay.
But they had to come from New Hall Street. If you, they had, they haven't put the top layer on, if you could.
Yeah, they will, normally they, they do wait, you know, two or three weeks, kind of let it settle in, and then they'll come back, but that will be taken, all that has to be taken care of before the winter moratorium.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Council Patch. Council Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dan, I received, received a call, or I spoke with someone today about 15 Bateman Avenue. Those are all brand-new sidewalks. What they tell me is that a couple of years ago, or close to a couple of years ago, there was an entity down there, and they believe it was National Grid, that had to do work on a gas main, and as a result, they had to break through the concrete. Those are brand-new sidewalks. Those are brand-new sidewalks. We spent an awful lot of money down there doing those sidewalks. They're not that, that old. I think they're probably nine or 10 years old. And I'm wondering if you could have someone from your crew go down there and ascertain whether or not it's National Grid that has, that, that put the hot tub there? Because my feeling is that if there's concrete there, they dig it up, they should replace it with concrete. There shouldn't be any replacement with hot tub. But, go ahead, sir, go ahead.
How, how long ago was this done? Do you know?
I believe, speaking with the person, they said about a year and a half ago.
Oh.
Okay.
Sometimes it's put in as a temporary patch until we, and we try to do, you know, a bunch of sidewalks at once, but if it's us, we'll take care of it.
And then, I had spoken to you several weeks ago about a situation at the corner of Sagamore and the Ponce Streets.
Yes, that is ours.
And I know that one of your people went down there and marked it off, but I haven't seen anything happen since.
Yeah, that was one, there was some confusion as to, originally, we thought it was a water.
That was a mainline extension.
Right, and then we went back and agreed it's ours, so we're all going to take care of it.
So, they, they will, any idea when that might happen?
Like I said, we're, it's, it's a busy time for us right now.
The reason I ask is because the asphalt plant's a closing zone.
Right, we're aware of that. November 15th is the, that's correct.
Yeah, and I'd like to get that, I'd like to get that done.
Did you say they marked it off already?
They've marked it off. Fellow came down, he marked it off with a can of white paint. And, and the reason is, though, it's, it retains a lot of water when it's, when it's sunken, and it causes public safety problems down there.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Powers. Counselor Kurjua.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one question. During the earthquake, they had a gas leak at Revere High School. Can you explain the situation there with that gas leak?
No, I can't. I was not aware of that.
Yeah.
But I can certainly...
Yeah, it was near the entranceway at a high school.
Okay, that evening?
Yes. Can you comment? That particular day, it seemed like there was a lot of minor gas leaks in the Revere area. Was that in other cities and towns, or just happened to be at Revere?
Not aware of the, the volume of gas leaks was, you know, any, well, it was above normal for that day. I'm not aware of that, but I can, like, look into that.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Kurjua. I thank you again for coming, and we'll see you next month. Thank you very much.
Counting item number three, hearing called is ordered upon the application of 338 Squire Road LLC, seeking permission from the Revere City Council to operate a retail gasoline business at convenience store with underground storage of 32,000 gallons of gasoline, and underground storage of 8,000 gallons of diesel, for a total of 40,000 gallons of underground storage on lots 817 to 829 at 338 Squire Road.
It's a public hearing, we had a proponent, it's for us, Attorney Simeoni.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the city council. My name is Attorney Larry Simeoni, and I represent the applicant, 338 Squire Road LLC. At this point, we're seeking, in accordance with 148, Section 13 and 14, a license to store flammables and combustibles at this location. An application filed by my client was done in September 12, 2012, wherein, wherein they sought to store 32,000 gallons of gasoline with 8,000 gallons of diesel fuel. The application was reviewed by the Revere Fire Department and endorsed and approved by the fire chief, and that's part of the package that you have before you. The license is requested in concert with the proposed construction of a self-service gasoline station, which is allowed under Revere Revised Ordinance 1716460. Taking you through the package, for those counselors that are reviewing it, you'll see the application filed and the particular request made, and you'll also see the site plan for the site. The site plan identifies the location of the tanks along the Sigourney Street entranceway. Those tanks and the tank design and the tank location plans are located at the page thereafter. The package also includes the tank specifications, along with the specifications for fiberglass underground tanks and the warranties granted with those tanks. There is also a, an architectural that is attached, which outlines the front elevation, the side elevation, and the rear elevation of the proposed gas, gasoline station. And the final two pages provide you with the floor plan and with the foundation plan. The package also consists of the site plan review recommendations, which I'll discuss briefly, along with a list of 162 Revere residents in the Ward 6 area, who have been asked to support this application on behalf of the petitioners. The site, 338 Squire Road, consists of lots 817 to 830, consists of 28,778 square feet. The self-service gas station proposed consists of five pumps, with a 4,500-square-foot convenience store for retail, storage, and office. The particular lot itself has 175 feet of frontage. When you review the site plan review conditions that were issued on June 4th, you might also note that a subsequent site plan committee was held with the fire chief in attendance to review variety of different issues, and this particular June 4th, 2012, site plan review committee recommendations were not changed or altered as a result of that recent meeting. But as you note in paragraph 2, establishes that this license is required and makes it a condition to the building permit. Most notably, if you look at the site plan review conditions, paragraph 7 says the curb cut renewal permit must be obtained from Mass DOT for the change in the use of the curb cut. This ultimately, this curb cut, state curb cut permit will be the final permit we receive and should be the final ingress and egress issues being addressed there. Right now, the site plan review committee has accepted the site plan that you see that is before you. It also establishes in paragraph 8 that all curbing will be either granite or precast concrete, and that all sidewalks and ramps shall be concrete. Further establishes in paragraph 9 that all site lighting shall have reflective shields to prevent glare on abutting residential properties. I draw your attention to paragraph 13, where it says that 10-feet-wide landscape screening and buffer areas shall be provided, along with the rear of the site adjacent to the abutting residential districts. This area shall be planted with abovities no, no less than six feet in height along the center of the rear property line, along with chandelier pier trees. You've got to love Frank Stringi. I can't even say what chandelier pier trees is. But needless to say, Mr. Stringi wants them, and we're putting them in. And we're putting them in along Sigourney Street area, and as well as the Augusta Street area, in accordance with that site plan. There will also be a new six-foot-high stockade fence, which will, at the rear of the property. Currently, at the rear of the property is an open area of residential land that will ultimately be developed to a two-family home, but there'll be, this six-foot stockade fence will buffer that lot from the existing facility. The applicants have been in business at the mobile next door since May of 2005. They have sought their neighbors that I've provided you, they've sought their approval of this, at least some support about this license that has already been approved by your fire chief. The hope is to develop this particular property. It'll be probably operated 24 hours, just as the existing mobile station is. There'll be 10 employees at the site over, for the three shifts. And again, as I stated before, there will only be one remaining permit, the building permit, which is expected to be issued within a day or so, and the mass highway permit, which will take several months. I'm here to answer any questions you have. My clients, Mr. Joseph C. Prizio, the manager of the LLC and his son, are also here with us, along with some abutters, who will speak in favor, along with the abutters petition that I've submitted for you.
Thank you. Any other proponents, people in favor? Would you like to speak? I just want to, I mean, you can take a raise of hands, who's, who in the audience is far it, you're all going to come up also.
My name's Deborah Cacaviallo, 25 years in Revere, on Goldie Street, and I am in favor of the new expansion plan. While the current economic climate makes real estate development extremely challenging, this development highlights what Revere has to offer our community. This new development will create opportunities for workers and economic development by creating real, measurable community benefits. This framework can make development a powerful tool in improving the city as a whole, through the creation of job opportunities, as well as making sure that the development results in shared prosperity and public benefit. Economic decision-making should be inclusive and open, and economic development strategies should create opportunities for workers, thus ensuring real, measurable community benefits. The owners have fully completed their agenda by organizing, negotiating, and complying with city ordinances, and are eager to begin what will be an establishment that will offer true sustainability through three key components: environmental safety, economic viability, and equality of opportunity. The Prizios are respected businessmen, who are well-established and hard-working. I truly wish them both the best of luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other proponents, people here to speak in favor?
Hi, my name's Mary Ann D. Luigi. I live at 64 Sigourney Street, and I'm in favor of this plan.
Thank you very much.
I've been working there 22 years.
Thank you.
Listalazi 406 Malden Street, and I'm in favor also.
Thank you. You don't be afraid of us up here. You can come up, you know, so. Any other people to speak in favor?
Hi, my name is Maria Romano, and I'm on 229 Oakwood Ave in Revere for 32 years, and I'm in all favor for it. It's a wonderful establishment, wonderful people, and definitely in favor for it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other proponents, people in favor? Seeing, hearing, none, we'll close that side of hearing. Anybody opposed, people in opposition to it?
Yes, definitely.
Hi, my name is Addie Rotundo.
Address, please.
128 Sigourney Street in Revere. This gas station will be sitting right on top of me and these other abutters, okay? We live right there, okay? And we are against it, okay? Jordan had a wonderful saying, "Taking care of your own." You're not doing that tonight. That is an old saying. I haven't heard it in years. Now, this should have never happened without contacting the abutters and the people who own property, pay taxes, and vote in the city of Revere. We are here in person to let you know that we voters and taxpayers don't want another 24-hour gas station with convenience stores in our community. Everyone is saying this is a done deal in Revere. I'm asking all of you to change that, that you put the homeowners, their family, their health, and their safety first before money, just like Counselor Arthur Granasso did. There are businesses that have not been paid, paid taxes for years. Not only have we paid taxes, we have paid more than our fair share. There is no need of it, for the following reasons. I am quoting your own city planner, Frank Stringi, plus Counselor Granasso. Health hazard, noise, odor, air pollution, litter, unbearable traffic. You should be all aware of how busy Sigourney Street is, especially you, Jessica Janino, who uses it. You're going to be paying for a lot of road repairs if this comes through. I want you to change your vote, okay? This is going to be the red...
Ma'am, just, just, just to make something clear, nobody voted on this issue yet. What they voted on several months ago is the zoning change for highway business. No one voted on this. It's a public hearing right now. Those people come up, all are right in the world to come up in favor of it. You have all are right in the world to speak against it. This will go to subcommittee. The council then will take a vote. So, no one's voted on this. I mean, I don't know where you're getting your information from, but...
Well, I'm hearing it, I guess it's scare tactics.
But you got a notice, I mean, everybody here, everybody 300 feet got notices. Your house is on there, you got notices. The director of butters definitely got certified letters, so no one tried to sneak anything by you. Go ahead, you have the floor.
Okay, it's still going to bring unbearable traffic, and of course, rats. This is not going to help the owners, the taxpayers, or the voters when this happens. Will the mayor and the counselors turn a deaf ear to all of these problems when they are created? The board of health, the mayor's office, will be bombarded with complaints regarding this. I'm saying to all of you, join Arthur Granasso in turning this down, as he is concerned about the people. He has the people in mind, not money. We live here for over 35 years, property owners, taxpayers, voters. We don't want and don't need, I stress that, we don't need another 24-hour gas station and an attached mini-mall of convenience stores. When all of us bought our property, there was no gas station. Why should there be one now? Instead of increasing our property value, you are diminishing it drastically. This should not be happening. Counselor Hess, you said in the paper, and I quote, "Revere value has decreased. We are at the bottom." The reason for that is that Revere counselors and mayors should be beautifying the city, showing people who visit here that you are not only concerned about taxpayers and voters and homeowners, but you care about their health, okay? You should bring into the city and beautify it. You should want to keep old residents and bring in new ones, okay? You should want these people to live here and bring up their families, and have their families have families here. Turning this down is showing the surrounding areas besides Revere residents that you care about the people who bought property here, you care about their health and the health of their family. You don't want to put another gas station in these areas that will drastically reduce their property and not beautify the community, something that is not needed. Mayor and all of the councils should reconsider and say to themselves that the homeowner in Revere's do not want another 24-hour gas station with convenience store. It's not needed. Again, this should not be about money. This should be about what the owners need to enhance their property value, their lives and the future of their children, and mayor and counselors should want owners' children to want to continue to live in the community that cares about their parents, their health, safety, and not make an area a living nightmare of hazardous waste, pollution, noise, traffic nightmare, parking problems, as well as rat problems. There are too many existing gas stations in our area. We have a shopping center just across the street. We have convenience stores nearby also. Again, there was never a gas station when we brought our property, therefore, there shouldn't be one now. This should be about concern of the people, their family, their health, their property value, and beautifying the city, so no one in Revere, and everyone that's surrounding the city who visits, who sees us, will say, "This is a city worth living," as the mayor and counselors are concerned about the community. Let your voices be heard. Say no, as people's health, family come first, not money. I know there are people here, and I understand.
And we have, ma'am, I've let you, I let you go on for quite a long time. We have a three-minute rule.
Okay.
I'd appreciate if you wrap it up. There's other speakers that want to speak also.
I'm just saying that you should consider the people who live here, who are abutters, who are right there. You should be helping them, okay? This should be about them and the value of their property and their homes, and wanting them to continue to live there and bring up their children. them to continue to live there and bring up their children and grandchildren.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. Any other proponents, people opposed?
Kathy Ross, Kathy Ross, this is Series 69 Sagurne Street, I own a house there. I don't know why we need another gas station, there's one right next door. That's a lot of gasoline at the bottom of my street, it's kinda worrisome. Jessica and Arthur, thank you, if you could look at this logically, and the traffic on the street is just gonna get worse. Since the McDonald's is down there, the traffic just is constant. I know it was bad before, but it's just, it's unbelievable now. So, that's all I have to say, I'm against it, I don't want another gas station, there's already one down there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents, people in post?
Hi, my name is Paul D. Luigi, and my mom here is 93 years old, she lives at 117 Sagurne Street, and the neighborhood is a nightmare, it's bad enough. You know, when they had the barroom down there, my street always had straws, cups, papers thrown in the yard. The barroom's gone, guess what, that all cleaned up. And they're talking about jobs, how many jobs you think you're gonna give? What value does your community is there? There's hardly any work out there now, you know, what are they gonna give, 10 jobs, 12 jobs? What's that? That ain't, that ain't doing anything much, okay? You know, I lived in this street for a long time, and when I was a kid, there was nothing in Revere. I'm 57 years old, I go back, we had the airport, you know? And I just wanna say, for my mother's safety, who's 93 years old, that she's dead-set against this. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you. Any other opponents?
Pat Rotundo, 128 Sagurne Street, I'm against it. It's gonna be, when they start digging up, it's gonna be rats there and everything else, pollution, everything else. I'm against it.
Thank you.
Joe Caboni, 107 Sagurne Street. I agree with Adele wholeheartedly. I think this is a severe health and safety issue, but it's gonna certainly make the traffic issue a lot worse than it is right now on Sagurne Street. Why we need another gas station, or even a 24-hour gas station on top of that, with a mini-mall, that'll certainly do nothing for the quality of my life or for my neighbors' lives. I'm opposed.
Thank you.
My name's Lena Fazlari, I live also at Sagurne Street. These people who are for it, they do not live across the street or next door to this place that you guys are gonna build, and I am not for it. I am so upset tonight that you guys are even considering this, putting tanks underground for so many gallons of gasoline near our neighborhood area? It's not, it's not gonna happen. It's not gonna happen. I'm asking for your vote to go against this problem. Let him put his gas station wherever it is, or either go someplace else. This is a neighborhood, people have to live there, and we do not need a 24-hour gas station there with lights and noise and all this, there's kids around there. So, please, I'm asking you not to vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents, people opposed? Seen, hear, and none will close that side of hearing. City councils, Council Patch.
I lived in that house for 50 years.
Got a name and address in the record.
I've been there a long time, and now I gotta have that pollution. I'm 93 years old, I paid my taxes all alone, I'm still paying them. I don't know, there's no decency in this world. Money. You know how much gas leakage there is on those gas tanks when they're underneath there? They come through the earth. They have a leakage, you get it in the cellars, everybody gets it. Every time they open up the ground, there's rats. The woman in the brown house on the corner, she had to get an exterminator when they, when they r- r- raised up that building. I don't think it's fair. I don't think so.
Thank you. We'll close that side of hearing again. City councils, Council Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am the ward counselor of Ward 6. I feel for the people that are against it. I've dealt with Mr. Mrs. Rotundo when she was against the liquor, the barroom there. We straightened out several matters there that she complained about. Unfortunately, Squire Road is a commercial, is a commercial property, and the owner of the commercial property has a right to sell his land. I mean, I have, I had a daughter-in-law that was employed at the 338, she lost her job.
Excuse me?
Yes, go ahead.
You're not supposed to go 200 feet back from the hindway. Where's he going with all that gas and stuff? Give me a little car.
Council Patch, you have the floor, please. I can have a debate back and forth.
Thank you. Listen, I'm just trying to state here a fact, Mr. Caruso had a right to sell his property. You people dealt with the barroom there for years, and I feel that with the new gas station coming in, is, if you give the gentleman a chance and see what he does with that property, that you'll be happy in the long run. There's a lot of rules and regulations that he has to follow. Today, a gas station's not like a gas station before. Your tanks are encased in cement and, that, that causes it from not leaking. There's so many new, new things today in building of gasoline, the safety in the pumps, and, but to get back, get back to it, as far as, unfortunately, you live in, near a commercial area, they're not gonna, they're not gonna put a park in there. I mean, it ain't gonna happen. You're talking about an investment here that's gonna give the city a lot more money and the commercial taxes. I spoke, matter of fact, I've only had one phone call, Andy DeFrancesco from 112 Augusta Street, he's on Better, yeah, on Better, and he, he lives right there at the corner of the, the house. Unfortunately, he can't come, he's, he just got out of the VA hospital. But he told me he's definitely in favor of the, the gas station going in there. He knows that Mr. Prizio will put a nice billing in there, he'll, he'll take care of the, the fence work and the, and the trees, and, and I think if you give him a chance, it's a, it's a win situation for the residents of the area, and also for the city as far as the commercial tax increase that will help on our residential taxes, and I just, you know, and I am in favor of putting it in there.
You sound like you work for him.
I don't think, I don't think that's...
Yeah, that's what it sounds like to me.
Council Patch, can we have order, please? Can we have order? Nobody interrupted these people when you spoke. Can you, please let the council, show respect for the council, please. Council Patch.
I don't think I deserve that, I mean, I come down to help you when you, you were complaining.
No, you didn't, you never helped me.
Council Patch, can you stick to the issue, please?
All right, unfortunately, again, Mr. Caruso had a right to sell the property to Mr. Prizio, and he has a right to build on it. And as far as I can see, it's gonna be, it's gonna increase the value of that area, and I just, it's not, I have no, I don't know Mr. Prizio that well. If any, if it was Joe Schmidt putting the, bought that land, I'd be still for it. I'm not, I'm not showing favoritism here, I got 162 names of people that are in favor. Andy DeFrancesco, pardon me? Unfortunately, my mother's, unfortunately, my mother's died.
Council Patch. Council Patch. Don't have to, don't have to answer to them, just make your comments.
Again, all I'm saying is, I hope my councilors, we already, it's already been approved for a gas station, this, the chief, the fire chief has approved, put the gas there, and there's no, as far as I can see, at this point, there's no way to turn this down. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Council Janino.
Thank you. So, there are a couple of things I wanted to address that have been brought up at this meeting so far tonight that you're all are very passionate about, which is good, because people are actually here. But the first thing is, you know, my house was on Sagurne Street before Sagurne Street was a street. We were literally the first house at the bottom of the street, so I feel you about the traffic, and I feel you about all the stuff that's going on, but you gotta look at it, Sagurne Street's a street, we have over 3,000 cars going down our street every single day already. There's no trucks allowed on Sagurne Street and proper signage is put up, so the concern about damage being done to the street, there's not gonna be heavy trucks going down Sagurne Street, there never will be. It's not permitted and it's enforced. You know, and the thing about rats, I think you're gonna have a lot more rats if it's a restaurant at the bottom of the street, and if you're looking at a possible restaurant being built, that's something that's really gonna cause, you know, that kind of animals and things like that that you're looking at, not a store. Another thing that aggravated me is, nothing put before this council is a done deal, and that comment really kind of irked me a little bit, because, you know, there are so many factors that go into every decision that we make that aren't just one side. So, I don't ever want a resident of the city to think that, you know, when a matter is brought before us, that our decision is made, or that something's already happening, because it's not. And finally, this is a family business, and I'm from a family that's had a family business in Revere for almost 80 years, and I think that, you know, we're losing family businesses in our community, and we're losing small, you know, Revere-employed places, and we have an opportunity right now to have that family, you know, self-employed Revere business. How many opportunities are we gonna have to have that again? You know, you don't know what could be put there, you don't know what could be another barroom. Does anyone want a barroom at the bottom of their street? I'm just saying, I think that...
Hello, hello? Can we please have order in the chambers? We're not getting anywhere like this.
I'm all set.
I mean, you know, Council Janino, you're all set? Council Sambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President.
So, here were another outbursts, I'm gonna ask you to leave, because, I mean, councils gave you a chance to speak, give them a chance. Council Sambudo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanna clear up a couple of items here. First of all, the only thing that's on the table here tonight is a gasoline storage license, which has already been approved by the, the fire chief. There's, there's nothing else being put on the table. They have, by right, the ability to build this gas station, by right, okay? So, the fact that some of us might not want a gas station there is really not relevant. It goes there by right. Now, I would've thought, when this proposal first came before the council and there was a zoning change, that the neighbors, especially the ones that complained about the bar that was there, and the noise at the end of the night, and the, the bottles breaking, and all the crap that I heard for years, would've been happy that it was being replaced with... Let's look at the record here. We've got a businessman who's run a business next door to where this gas station is going for, I don't know, seven, eight years, a perfectly-run business. I've never had one complaint, and I get, everybody calls me. I haven't had one complaint from this business. I don't know these people from anywhere, except to know that I met them once or twice, maybe when I was in there pumping gas or whatever, but I do know that they're a good business and a good neighbor. I expect them to be the same good business and good neighbor. But the bottom line is here, the only thing that's being discussed here, and it's gonna go to the zoning subcommittee, and we can all come and, and talk about it then, and elaborate on what our fears are and what our solutions to those fears might be, but the bottom line is, this is about a gasoline storage license. The rest of the stuff is pretty much decided by law. It's by right they have this gas station there. Now, I only ask you to look at the gentleman's, the family's track record of how they've run this business for the past eight years next door. It's been a, one of the best-run businesses in the city, and, and I get complaints about everything, and I never get complaints about that gas station that they've been running for eight years. So, the rest of the stuff about traffic, I think Council Janino spoke to it very well. There'll never be an oil truck down your street. It, it's not allowed, and it won't, and we won't allow it. And God forbid, something is going on in that gas station that's gonna disturb the neighbors, we'll certainly act on it, but I think that some of the fears here are being blown out of proportion, and that's all I've got to say for tonight, and I'll bring up any other issues on, at the zoning subcommittee.
Thank you, Council Sambudo. Any other councils? Seen, hear, and none, I just make a couple comments, and this is gonna go to committee. This will go to, to Senator Council Sambudo's Economic Development Committee. It's not a zoning issue, it's, it's actually an ordinance that's on the books, a 140B license, so, and the only thing I, I would say is that, you know, some people come up here, and Council Janino's right, I mean, you come up, you offend the city council, for what reason? I don't know. Done deal, hasn't been a vote, hasn't even gone to committee. Council Sambudo brings a lot of good points up. This here was discussed several times months ago. Months ago, letters were sent out that the bar, or a possible gas station, changed, changed the zone so the gas station can go there. Didn't see any people up here. What it told me is they want the gas station, they want the gas station to go, and a lot, I mean, the barroom to go, a lot of people wanted it. Now that it's gone, some people are changing their tunes, but as far as the city council is, and we represent the whole city, is that what I was told, that the city estimated the taxes on the bar as like $450,000, when we're gonna be taxing this gas station of $4 million. So, I do think of the taxpayers when they take votes up here, we all wanna pay lower taxes and not more across the city, but when you buy, you know, near a highway and stuff, you have to expect certain things to go there. You buy, in Beachmont, where I'm from, you're gonna expect planes to go over your head. I have people that moved there, to an airport there for how many years, say, geez, planes flying over, it's a runway you bought under. I mean, you know, there's things that go in certain places, there's zoning issues, but nobody up here made their mind up, it's gonna go to zoning committee, you may have forced a couple people maybe to change their mind, that maybe voted against it, I don't know, but sometimes that happens up here. But this will go to committee, you'll have the right to come, at the committee meeting, when Council Sambudo has it, and then it's up to him when he takes it out for a vote. But that being said...
Mr. President, I'll do respect, Mr. President.
Council Ganaso.
I feel, I clearly feel that this is a zoning issue, not a legislative affairs issue.
Well, it's not really a zoning issue.
Of course it's a zoning issue. Everything's in economic development, you might as well say, but this is a zoning issue. I look for clarity on that, because it is important what committee it goes to.
I don't have a problem sending to Council Riddens, doesn't matter. It's a joint.
Well, I think they're both capable of doing it, but I think the proper source is the zoning subcommittee.
I don't have a problem, it seems like we're throwing everything at the poor Steve Riddens.
But that's the nature of the beast. That's... You wanna have a joint committee, I don't, we can have a joint committee.
That's, that's fine, if you can have a zoning committee, and the councils, the whole can go there, as far as I'm concerned. But with that being said, that this hearing is closed.
Calendar item number four, hearing called is ordered upon the application of MetroPCS seeking permission from the Revere City Council to modify an existing telecommunications site for the purpose of installing two additional one-foot dishes at 1070 Broadway.
Proponents?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council, thank you very much. My name is Brian Wilson, 47 Yale Street, Winchester, Massachusetts, representing MetroPCS. I appreciate that the board, the council, has agreed to hear seven requests for special permits tonight, and just by way of background, I'm going to talk about what MetroPCS is doing, and this will apply to all of the special permit requests before the board this evening.
I apologize, Senator, can we take the, can we take the, can we take the conversation out in the hallway, please? Can we take the, can we take the conversation out in the hallway, please? Sorry about that.
That's quite all right. MetroPCS is licensed by the Federal Communications Commission to provide PCS service in regional markets across the country. Our niche is to be a high-value provider of fixed-price service. We have service existing in the city and throughout New England. And with the competitive nature of the marketplace, what we are trying to do is stay at the leading edge of the competitive marketplace. And that leading edge right now is directed towards providing faster data and more reliable service. Where we have existing sites throughout the city, we would like to provide better service to the residents of Revere by providing faster service. And because the technology advances have come in the wireless arena as opposed to the wire-line arena, we can provide faster service through the provision of wireless backhaul service. Instead of using the landlines to interconnect our wireless systems to the backhaul network, essentially using our competitors to provide us service, we would like to be able to provide that faster service through the airwaves with the addition of microwave dishes to a number of our sites that will provide a point-to-point backhaul network. Unlike the panel antennas that are currently installed and providing service to the community that spray 360 degrees of coverage, these are point-to-point systems with very narrow beams to connect one site to another so that those sites can communicate with each other. So, the increased emissions from these sites are negligible and only if you're right in between the beams of service, which would interrupt it. In particular, for this site, is it, is an existing tower? And the city council has already determined it is an appropriate location for the provision of this service. We are asking for permission to do a minor modification consisting of adding two dishes approximately one foot in diameter. I know that the councilors got an enormous package from me, but if anybody didn't have an opportunity to look at that, I have just a brief snapshot that shows what it looks like before the dishes, what it looks like right now, and what it would look like after. If anybody would like me to pass those out?
Give them to the clerk.
So, I'm certainly happy to answer any questions of the council.
This is a public hearing. We're going to go through proponents, opponents, and city councils. So, if you want to ask questions, we'll... Ballack?
1070 Broadway. I'm sorry, the heading is where the picture was taken from. This, yeah, this is the 1070 Broadway application. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents, people in favor? Seeing here and none will close that side of hearing. Any opponents, people opposed? Seeing here and none, close that side of hearing. Any city councils? There's just a modification. There's seven of them coming at us, so basically it's going to be repeated.
This is going to zoning subcommittee?
This will go to zoning subcommittee, yes.
I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay. Seeing here and none will close that side of hearing. This will go to zoning subcommittee.
Calendar item number five, hearing called is ordered upon the application of MetroPCS seeking permission from the Revere City Council to modify an existing telecommunications site for the purpose of installing four additional one-foot dishes at 51 Light Ave.
Proponents?
Okay. Again, Brian Wilson, representing MetroPCS. This is an existing rooftop communication facility on Revere Housing Authority property. There are several users providing service there in addition to MetroPCS. We are requesting permission to install three dish antennas measuring approximately one foot in diameter and one dish antenna measuring approximately two feet in diameter. The reason that we require one larger dish is because of the distance between the connection points. And again, if anybody would like to briefly review a number of snapshots before and after.
Any other proponents? Seeing here and none will close that side of hearing. Any opponents, people opposed? Seeing here and none will close that side of hearing. Any city councils?
Mr. President...
Counselor Novoseltsky.
It is in my ward and I'll just hold off all my comments for the zoning meeting.
Any other councils, seeing here and none will close that side of hearing. This will also go to zoning subcommittee.
Calendar item number six, hearing called is ordered upon the application of MetroPCS seeking permission from the Revere City Council to modify an existing telecommunications site for the purpose of installing one additional antenna at 250 Revere Street.
Brian Wilson, representing MetroPCS. This is a little different than all of the other applications before the council this evening in that there will be no visible change to the exterior of St. Anthony's. Our antennas are currently enclosed behind... Whereas we have current, we have already changed the windows in the bell tower with radio frequency-friendly materials. We will not need to make any visible changes to the exterior of the church.
Any other proponents? Seeing here and none, close that side of hearing. Any opponents, seeing here and none, will close that side of hearing. Any city councils? Seeing here and none will close that side of hearing. This will also go to zoning subcommittee.
Calendar item number seven, hearing called is ordered upon the application of MetroPCS seeking permission from the Revere City Council to modify an existing telecommunications site for the purpose of installing one additional one-foot dish at 400 Broadway.
Brian Wilson with MetroPCS. We have three antennas currently installed in the central fire station and we would like to add one one-foot dish antenna, which would be enclosed behind the screen and painted a dark color so as to minimize visibility.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing here and none will close that side of hearing. Any opponents, seeing here and none will close that side of hearing. Any city councils? This will go to zoning subcommittee. Seeing here and none, close that side of hearing.
Calendar item number eight, hearing called is ordered upon the application of MetroPCS seeking permission from the Revere City Council to modify an existing telecommunications site for the purpose of installing two additional one-foot dishes and one additional one-foot dish at 474 Revere Beach Boulevard.
Thank you, Brian Wilson with MetroPCS. This is an existing rooftop facility and I'm not sure if that was transcribed improperly or if it was unclear, but we are requesting permission to install two one-foot dishes and one two-foot dish.
Any other proponents? Seeing here and none will close that side of hearing. Any opponents, seeing here and none will close that side of hearing. Any city councils? Seeing here and none, this will go to zoning subcommittee.
Calendar item number nine, hearing called is ordered upon the application of MetroPCS seeking permission from the Revere City Council to modify an existing telecommunications site for the purpose of installing three additional one-foot dishes at 427 Squire Road.
Brian Wilson, representing MetroPCS, an existing telecommunications facility at 4 Point Sheraton. And we are requesting the modification of that facility by the addition of three one-foot dishes.
Any other proponents? Seeing here and none will close that side of hearing. Any people opposed, opponents? Seeing here and none will close that side of hearing. Any city councils? Seeing here and none will close that side of hearing. This will also go to zoning subcommittee.
Calendar item number 10, hearing called is ordered upon the application of MetroPCS seeking permission from the Revere City Council to modify an existing telecommunications site for the purpose of installing one additional one-foot dish at 204 Proctor Ave.
Existing telecommunications facility. We currently have frames to accommodate our antennas. And this would be a request for modification by adding one one-foot dish to the existing communication facility.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing here and none will close that side of hearing. Any opponents, people opposed? Seeing here and none will close that side of hearing. Any city councils? Seeing here and none will close that side of hearing. This will go to zoning subcommittee. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Now, I have a quiz. What is Brian's last name? Thank you.
Calendar item number 11, report of the zoning subcommittee.
Counselor Reardon.
Thank you, Mr. President. This afternoon, a little after 5:00 because of my tardiness, the zoning subcommittee met to consider two items before the zoning subcommittee and now before the city council. The first was item C-12-10, which is a petition from the Lighthouse of Revere, Inc., 204 Proctor Avenue, seeking permission from the city council to construct a two-story addition to a pre-existing nonconforming use as a nursing home within the RB District and lots 1A, 1B, 2B, and C at 204 Proctor Avenue in Revere. Mr. President, the matter was fully considered by the zoning subcommittee and reported out unanimously favorably to the full city council with the addition of site plan reviews, requests for conditions. And I'll just briefly go over them. Number one was a 10-foot-wide landscaping buffer which shall be maintained along the side property line between the proposed addition and the abutting residential properties. The landscape buffer shall include a planting of continuous row of evergreens, minimum eight feet in height along the full length of the property line. The final landscaping plan shall be approved by the site plan review. Number two, any rooftop mechanical units shall be located at the farthest, furthest point from the abutting residential structures and shall include noise baffles. Number three, the final plans will be subject to the approval of the site plan review committee and fire department. And lastly, number four, an as-built plan, including the accurate location of all utilities and structures within the site, shall be provided to the building inspector and city engineer upon completion. It was the recommendation of the zoning subcommittee to grant the permit with the site plan review conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any city councils? Seeing here and none will take this up for a roll call vote.
Shall the relief requested be granted subject, for the special permit application of Lighthouse, Inc., to construct a two-story addition to a pre-existing nonconforming use as a nursing home at 204 Proctor Ave, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review? Counselor Arigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Reardon.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Penta.
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted.
Is that it from the zoning subcommittee?
No, actually, we have one more item, Counselor President Penta. I was waiting for your prompt on that.
You have the floor, Counsel Reardon. Chairman Reardon.
Item C-12-11, which is a petition from Johnny Sarufim, trustee of 212 Everett Street Nominee Realty, Real Estate Trust, located at 212 Everett Street in Revere, seeking permission from the Revere City Council to expand a nonconforming structure and nonconforming use, a special garage, to construct a 40 by 40-foot addition to operate a Class II use within the same building as a special garage within the TED District on Lot 9 and Part 22 at 212 Everett Street in Revere, Massachusetts. Again, this matter came to us with conditions as proposed by site plan review. They have been somewhat modified by a motion or suggestion of Counselor Novoselsky, which was unanimously, again, reported out favorably with those conditions. I'll read them briefly. A five-foot-wide landscape buffer strip must be maintained along the full frontage of the property encompassing lots 9 and 10, along Everett Street, with the exception of the driveway entrance to the proposed garage addition. This landscape buffer shall include the planting of a minimum of five, I'm sorry, six 2 1/2 minimum caliber Chanticleer pear trees and shall be maintained by the property owner. I'll say parenthetically that Chanticleer, we need to get from Mr. Stringji a photograph of these Chanticleer pear trees, I believe, because there's been a lot of question as to what exactly they are. But notwithstanding that, there, number two, there should be no outdoor storage of vehicles along Everett Street. And lastly, as recommended by site plan review, the parking lot in the American Legion Highway frontage shall be marked out for 18 parking spaces. No more than 15 spaces of these shall be utilized for the Class II use. Counselor Novoselsky recommended, and is part of, I believe, the subcommittee's recommendation, that the 18 parking spaces be returned to the original 12, 21, which are outlined right now. In addition, that of those 21 parking spaces, one be designated handicapped, two be designated by sign for visitors, and two be designated by sign for employees, in that all parking spaces should be demarked by white pavement marks. So, that was reported out favorably for a vote by the city council. If anybody's listening.
Thank you, Chairman Reardon. Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. As I stated before, I support this project. I think it's going to enhance the area down there. I, again, want the conditions, part of the permit. And from what I've seen, I've been in that building, guys done a great job down there. And again, I think that building on the back, 40 feet, is going to eliminate 40 feet of parking down there, of cars that could be, you know, cars they were working on. So, I support it, Mr. President, and I hope my colleagues will this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Powers. Counselor Guanasso.
I think, Mr. President, to thank you. Upon further review, as has been mentioned many times in the football games, doesn't Frank Stringji own the Chanticleer pear tree orchard? So, I think that might be some of the source of what he's driving at. Thanks, Mr. President.
Mr. President, just a quick point of information.
Counselor Powers, state your point.
Chanticleer pear trees are trees that grow to a minimum height for everyone's edification. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Powers, for that edification. Roll call on the vote.
Shall the relief requested be granted subject for the, I'm sorry, granted for the special permit application of Johnny Sarufim to expand a nonconforming structure and nonconforming use, to construct a 40 by 40-foot addition to operate a Class II use on lots 9 and Part 22 at 212 Everett Street, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review as amended by the zoning subcommittee? Counselor Arigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Reardon.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Penta.
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted. Calendar item number 12, report of the appointment subcommittee.
Counselor Guanasso.
Mr. President, the appointment subcommittee met earlier this afternoon. We had two items before us. The first was the reappointment of the Board of Elder Affairs for a new three-year term expiring March 2015, Ms. Josephine Picardi. That was voted on favorably. The second portion of our subcommittee meeting was regarding a reappointment of James Guido as Deputy Director of Emergency Management. We subsequently received a communication from the mayor's office stating that that wasn't necessary, that by virtue of his appointment in 2004, he virtually stays on that position without confirmation needed from the city council. So, what we have before us this evening is just the one appointment for the Board of Elder Affairs. I ask that you vote that favorably.
Thank you, Counsel Guanasso. Roll call on the appointment?
On the appointment of Josephine Picardi as a member of the Elder Affairs Committee. Counselor Arigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Reardon.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Powers.
Yes.
I mean, Penta.
Yes.
Excuse me. Yes, the appointment has been confirmed. Calendar item number 13, communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of James Guido.
Place on file.
Calendar item number 14, communication from the Director of Planning and Community Development relative to SOU use ordinance amendments.
Public hearing.
Calendar item number 15, motion presented by Counselor Powers that the mayor direct the building inspector to investigate the storage of vehicles and other related equipment in the parking lot of Wonderland Dog Track. It is the understanding of the council that there is no longer a license for the parking or storing of vehicles on that site. If, in fact, Wonderland is found to be in violation of the city ordinances regarding the storage of vehicles and equipment, a cease and desist order shall be issued by the building inspector.
Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, over the past several days, I saw some, they look like storage units stored down there. Thank you, Mr. President. I, over the past several days, I saw some, they look like storage units stored down there, and I found out they were, my understanding, had contaminants in them from the national grid. Now, they're out of there, those things are out of there, but I did a little further research, and I found out that the, they were notified, the outfit in New York that has control of that property was notified that their license to park vehicles expired at the end of June. There are still probably a couple of hundred cars tonight I want to park down there, and probably a dozen or so tractor trailer trucks. Now, the licensing board does not issue licenses for that particular reason. They issue licenses for cars that are going to be used for commuter. So I would suggest that the owners of that property be contacted and advise them that the license has expired, and if they want to continue that work down there, they have to come before this city council to get a special permit for the storage of those vehicles and trucks. And I would hope that this, my motion would be sent over to the building inspector and our city ordinances be reinforced in that respect. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Council Powers. Under motion on favor, all opposed, all vote.
Late motion presented by Council Reardon that the city council president conduct a meeting of the committee of the whole on Monday evening, October 29th, at 5:00 p.m., for the purpose of discussing the latest meeting of the school department and MSBA relative to the most recent McKinley School proposal.
I spoke to Council Reardon about that. We're going to move that to November 5th at 5:00 committee as a whole, and then we'll have the meeting at 6:00, city council meeting.
If I could, Mr. President, just very briefly. The latest plans now have been developed by the team, working on it, the design team. We're very, I've been designated by the full committee to request this meeting. I think it'll be extremely informative, but, excuse me, but what we're mostly looking for is that the city council have an opportunity to give its input on what's been happening on a gradual basis up till now. We are getting closer and closer to the point where we have to select a design, and I think it's important that every one of the city councils be informed and have an opportunity to express their opinion about this very, very important issue to both the city and in particular, what for. Thank you.
Council Reardon, just your opinion. Do you think an hour would be enough?
I think an hour would be enough. I think our meeting lasted about an hour. There were some other issues that were brought up, but as far as specifically addressing, they have a little, I don't know what I call it, a film showing the school from various angles, or showing the planned school from various angles, and the various options that we may explore, we may want to explore, and that's essentially what we're looking at.
Okay, that's fair enough. Anybody have any problems with that? No, and if it goes a little-
The night before the election.
If it goes a little further, that's fine. No one in this room has an election.
Since when do we have a meeting the night before an election?
It's a state election.
It's a federal one.
I mean, a federal election, I'm talking, and a state also.
Most important election of our lifetime.
Oh, how many times have I heard that?
12th is Veterans Day. I don't know if anybody wants to have it on the 12th. The 12th is Veterans Day.
No.
What's that? November 5th, is that enough time?
That's, actually, we were looking to do it on next week, but we don't have a meeting in, but we do have the appointments. As I suggested to you, we could have done it after we do the-
No, but I'm saying, November 5th at 5:00.
5:00, yeah.
So what is the problem with that?
Well, I mean, there isn't an election on Tuesday. I mean, it's a, but it's a federal and state election.
I think an hour is, I think Council Zambudo can take, take an hour away from holding up the signs out on the street.
Unless he's, unless he's flying to Washington.
It is the most important-
Council Zambudo, you flying to Washington?
Yeah.
He'll be here. He's got to worry about the home fires is what he's got to be worried about, right?
Next order of business.
Late motion presented by Council Powers that the mayor request the Department of Public Works to immediately paint traffic lines on the newly paved portions of Revere Street in the interest of public safety.
Mr. President, Council Powers put the motion.
I'm Council Powers, Mr. Granasso. Just in case you, yeah, I understand from speaking with you earlier that arrangements have been made by the mayor and Frank Stringi to have those lines painted. In its present condition down there, there is a safety hazard, and I had a gentleman come over to my home that doesn't represent you, he represents me, and he lives on the lower end of Revere Street. So that was the reason for my motion, and seeing as it's being done, I consider it a done deal. Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you, Council. Council Granasso.